I'd like to call to order a planning board meeting for today, April 9th, 2019. Just a reminder for, as required by law, the town may audio or video record this meeting. Any person intending to either audio or video record this open session is required to inform the chair if there's anyone recording tonight. With that said, I'd like to open the public hearing. The first item on the agenda is PB 2019 dash three, Howard's Retail LLC. I'd like to reopen, reopen the public hearing from March 26, 2019, and they have requested to continue this. So I'd like to read into the record the letter from them. This is from Matthew Bombasi. He's the Assistant Project Manager. "Good afternoon, Elaine. We respectfully request a continuance from April 9th, 2019 Planning Board Hearing to the April 23rd, 2019 Planning Board Hearing for the continued review of the submitted applications relative to the subject site. The reason for this continuance is that not all board members are anticipated to be available at the April 9th hearing. Could you please confirm receipt? Let me know if you need additional information. Thank you. Matthew Bombasi, Assistant Project Manager."
Motion, continue.
Until, if I may, until a date certain.
To April 23rd.
At six.
At 6:30 PM.
I accept the amendment.
Second.
Okay. I'll have to take a roll call vote. David?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
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 And aye has it, so that is continued.
423, right?
Yes. Next on the list, PB 2019 dash seven, Joseph E. Preston and Karen T. Keeney as owners, care of William Crowell Esquire, representative seeks approval of the use special permit with waivers for alternative access pursuant to the code of Towne-Harwich, Section 325-18P and Section 325-51. The proposal seeks to establish an easement via 12 Pleasant Valley Road map 101 parcel X8 dash 217 for use by 81 Sequatum Road map 101 parcel W2-A. The parcels are located in the RR zoning district.
Evening, your substitute chairman.
Thank you.
Attorney William Crowell from Howard's Court, and I have the agent of the petitioner, Richard Vio, Vio with me this evening. And we have one, two, three, four, five members. And, sorry, I wasn't here earlier. Did you announce that it has to be an unanimous vote for a, for a special permit?
No.
We have not, he, there was not announced yet.
There was not announced.
So we have Dave on the line.
Ah, so we have six members.
Six members.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Mr. Harris, yep.
So as I understand it, Mr. Chairman, we would need five out of the six to approve the special permit. Is Mr. Stoltz back on the board?
I am.
Good to see you again.
Probably only two old guys like you and I would remember when he was on the board before.
Well, I remember. Alan remembers.
Yeah.
I have the green card.
Great to have him.
Thank you for lumping me into that category, Mr. McCarlin. You want a second on that? So, we have filed a petition for alternate access, and there was a plan filed, but then there was a revised plan filed. Do you folks have the revised plan for Moran Engineering? It was revised March 26, 2019?
Yes.
Everybody has that? It shows the easement extending up along Fifth Street and then angling to the right towards the three structures on the property at 81 Sequatum? Everybody has that? So, the petitioners purchased the property at 81 Sequatum a while ago, and then the most recent transaction was for 12 Pleasant Valley Road, which is shown at the bottom of the plan, abutting Pleasant Valley Road, and has the proposed easement going along the right side of the dwelling, and it also shows, thank you, the section to be removed. The property at 81 Sequatum is a little bit unique, and Mr. McCarlin, being an attorney, might appreciate some of this, but the petitioner owns, the owner of 81 Sequatum owns both sides of Fifth Street. On the land court plan, the petitioner owns, and this was back in 1928, when the land court issued the decree, owns lots A and B on both sides of Fifth Street, and lot C, which abuts Long Pond, is on the other side of First Avenue. So Fifth Street has never been constructed, it's a paper way. The petitioner owns both sides of Fifth Street pursuant to the land court decree, but subject to the rights of others to use Fifth Street and First Avenue. Fifth Street having never been constructed, no one has sought to use Fifth Street, but they do own it, the title to Fifth Street. So, I met with Ms. Greenhouse, the town planner, and that allayed any concerns that she had about Fifth Street, especially since the proposed driveway is going to angle right off of Fifth Street and go over towards the existing dwelling and guest house and garage, and would not affect anybody's rights to use Fifth Street if they sought to use it. We also attached to the petition a letter from our fire chief, Norman Clark, and you folks should each have a copy of that in your handout. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And he says that the, as fire chief, he hereby supports the proposed plan for an access easement over 12 Pleasant Valley Road for the benefit of W2A, which is 81 Sequatum. 81 Sequatum has frontage on what was known as First Avenue, but is now known as Sequatum But the new access off of Pleasant Valley Road would allow for year-round emergency access. Says that presently this property, meaning 81 Sequatum, cannot be accessed during a storm and throughout most of the winter months, which poses an immediate and continued safety and hazard li, and liability. This plan addresses that issue on a permanent basis, imposes no negative impacts, I fully support, and would recommend the approval.
Sorry?
All right. So, the fire chief has reviewed that, Mr. Vio has met with him and obtained this written opinion by the fire chief saying that he supports it and that it is superior to access off of Sequatum Road, especially during the winter months. I think, not last winter, but the winter before, when we had that really onerous storm, it was pretty much shut down and impassable. So, this would allow access for 81 Sequatum off of Pleasant Valley Road. The town planner, in her staff report, does not have a problem with it, and when I met with her, she was of the opinion that this would be superior access. She says the reasoning for the requests are valid and do appear to be superior to the frontage in her staff report. So, we're asking that the board grant a special permit to the petitioner to allow for the easement over 12 Pleasant Valley Road for the benefit of 81 Sequatum Road as alternate, alternative superior access. Thank you. Oh, and I might add that I don't, the petitioner is also of the opinion that this easement would not constitute a substantial detriment to the, to the neighborhood, would not create a substantial increase in noise, traffic, congestion, odors, fumes, or the like, and would not be a substantial detriment to the property values in, in the neighborhood. Thank you.
Planning comments?
Just, just what Charlene wrote. If you want me to read them out, I'll read them out.
Sure. Lance, do you need a copy?
Yes. I'll start by adding that I heard back from Highway, and Highway's additional comments are that a driveway permit application will be required. Charlene notes that the proposed access is shown over the eas, shown over the easement at 12 Pleasant Valley Road, over a portion of Fifth Street, which the applicant owns per a land court decree, and to 81 Sequatum Road. A portion of the existing dwelling at 12 Pleasant Valley Road is to be demolished to accommodate the access easement. The reasoning for the request is valid and do appear to be superior to the frontage. Thank you.
Any planning board comments?
I have a question for Bill.
Bill?
The Fifth Street itself is owned by the client, and then zero Fifth Street is also owned by him?
That strip, yes.
So both strips are owned?
On either side of Fifth Street are owned by 81 Sequatum.
Okay. But Fifth Street, is that a townway or a private way?
No. It's never been constructed, it's a paper road, there's nothing there.
I understand that, but who owns it?
It's a private road.
Okay.
Yeah. It's never been taken by the town, by eminent domain.
Who owns the private road? People, who owns the private road?
Legally, if you own, if you abut a private road shown on a subdivision plan, you own to the middle.
Okay.
If you own both sides, you own.
I got it.
Both sides of the road.
But people do have a right of way over it?
Theoretically, they do.
So.
And that's why Charlene was not concerned about this proposed driveway, just angling off at the base of what appears to be Fifth Street on that plan.
So my only question is, how do you stop other people from using his driveway as a right of way?
The proposed easement, if it became a problem, then the owners of 81 Sequatum could put a gate on it.
I'm just interested in how he would.
Just, I, if I, if I may, I mean, Rick Vio, I actually own, one of the owners of 12 Pleasant Valley, and another house in the neighborhood. Fifth Street has never been used, never been used as a right of way. I think it's always been considered, in the last several ownerships anyways, that it was all private property, and there's no, there's theoretical access from Sequatum, but it doesn't go anywhere. It just terminates at 12 Pleasant Valley.
And nobody has a walking path over there?
No, no. It's, it's actually lawn and landscaping.
They would have no legal right to use the easement because Fifth Street, as he said, ends, as shown on the plan, and the easement would only be for the benefit of the owners of 81 Sequatum, not anybody else. So they could put a gate up if they had to.
Can you tell us who owns 12 Pleasant Valley?
Yes, Joseph E. Preston and.
No, no, 12 Pleasant Valley, so it's, it's 12 Pleasant Valley.
Oh, yes, sorry. 81 Sequatum is, is the petitioner's, and I have, if you bear with me, Mr. McCarlin, I have a copy of the deed in here, I believe.
I can answer it anecdotally if you want to follow up with the official.
Sure, because it just changed hands.
Yeah, so.
Here it is here. 12 Pleasant Valley LLC purchased 12 Pleasant Valley Road on January 7, 2019.
And so.
Who's 12 Pleasant Valley?
I'll add some color to that. So 12 Pleasant Valley LLC are the owners of 21 Fourth Street, and I am actually one of the owners of that. To give you the background, if you haven't been through the neighborhood, 12 Pleasant Valley has been a thorn in the side of the neighborhood for a very long time. The house has been occupied in a very bizarre way, completely destroyed, filled with trash. You would call it a gross hoarder situation and a disaster. We worked very hard over the last few years to purchase the house, and eventually did that, and have, first of all, cleaned it all out, cleaned up the yard, taken everything out of there, so it wasn't an eyesore of the neighborhood, and now will begin to rehab the house.
The current, the current owner's going to rehab?
Correct, and maintain ownership.
And my follow-up question?
He's a member of that LLC.
That's fine. This is my other question is, the new proposed right-of-way easement, excuse me, across 12 Pleasant Valley, is that by agreement with the owners of 12 Pleasant Valley?
It, it is, absolutely, absolutely.
And they signed, they, I submitted an email from them authorizing me to represent them in this hearing.
Well, and one of the reasons, you know, behind this easement and whatnot is just being part of the neighborhood, we recognize that the Prestons, who live at 81 Sequatum, and a number of other folks actually along Sequatum, part of the private road, have really no winter access at, at all. And the Prestons, in this case, had talked to us about, once we bought it, about the idea of they want to be down there more often, they have aging parents that they'll be down there with, they really can't be down there if they have no ability to have an ambulance or a fire truck in, or, as when I was talking to Chief Clark, he said if the house catches on fire in the middle of the winter, it's going to be very, very difficult to access it. So, when they approached us with that, we said sure, it doesn't, it's no real detriment to 12 Pleasant Valley. We planned on owning it and just renting it out as kind of an extension of the property that's owned on the pond, maybe using it as a guest house on and off, that type of thing. So it was of no negative, it was no, no negative impact, so we agreed to it.
Thank you.
Counselor, my only question with Fifth Street. So, to me, you can have an unconstructed public way. So if it was laid out and taken, you can have a public way that you either own the fee simple, that the town either owns the fee simple of, or the town can own just an easement to cross and recross for the, for the benefit of the public.
This isn't public.
So it's not public at all? So was it ever, it's not constructed, public way, just shown on a map and never?
That's the way these.
Nothing was ever done anything with it?
Subdivisions, especially the older ones like this, Long Pond, Hinkley's Pond, these, these subdivisions were the reason that subdivision control and planning boards came into existence, because they built these, they, they had the plans drawn up, and there was one man that was the chairman of the planning board back then, Charles Johnson, back in the 50s, and he was it, and he approved the plan, and then the developer would sell off the lots and never construct the roads, never put in the electricity, never put in the telephone, and then you, that's why you have these dirt roads that, by Hinkley's Pond and Long Pond, because the developers weren't required. Now, since subdivision control went into effect like in 1949, you folks as the planning board have the teeth to be able to say to the developer, we have a covenant, we have a lien on your title, that your title's not clear until we release that covenant after you've put in the roads and utilities. Until that time, the town's not going to take a road until it's actually been constructed. Then they petitioned the owners in the subdivision with petition town meeting, annual town meeting to take it public domain and be a public road. So these are not public roads, they start out as private, this was never built, it remains private.
So, and your land court decree shows that he owns not only the, the fee in the roadway, but the fee on both sides of the roadway?
I.
So both on 81 Sequatum and, and the strip of parcel that is actually abuts 21, between 21 Fourth Street and Fifth Street?
Yes. I, I actually have a title out in my car, a file that's about three inches thick, because I struggled with this, so because I represented a prior owner of 81 Sequatum, and looked at that and said, and went to the land court, by and so forth, we went through it all, and that's what the decree is, a bounding description of the entire parcel.
Okay.
And includes, includes the whole thing.
If I, one follow-up. Is there any anticipation that this proposed driveway is also going to, it's not proposed to provide access back over to 21 Fourth Street?
No.
Because there's no, there's no connection there?
They have access to Fourth and Sequatum as well.
Okay.
As a matter of fact, their main entrance, that was originally called 77 Sequatum, and it was switched and the driveway was moved around to 21 Fourth Street.
Okay.
Because of that access issue.
Okay.
Just, they had a much easier way of, you know, doing it because they were on the corner.
Thank you. I thought I saw, or you mentioned that Sequatum is a private road as well?
Correct.
Sequatum has, has been there for a long, long time, and, and I don't think that the town has ever taken that as a townway. So is that also owned by 81? That section of it, that section of it is owned on the land court plan, whatever's within the boundaries, the owners of 81 Sequatum own that section of Sequatum Road because they own both sides, including the lot that abuts the lake, subject to the rights of others to use it, and that road does exist and others do use it. So the other houses, whatever the numbers go, 81 to 83, or 79, whatever it is, then the next houses on Sequatum, would the same thing apply that they own that? If they own. Portion of the private road themselves as well? If they own the lot on the other side of the road, which many of them do, that's their beach lot, then they would own that section of Sequatum. If they don't own the beach lot, some of them don't, then they only own to the middle of the road. So it, it sounds to me like what's being proposed here, the requested easement is clearly for the benefit of 81, and thinking what the chief said about winter access and the ambulances and fire trucks, everybody else on Sequatum doesn't benefit from this.
Can I answer that?
Sure.
So, Sequatum Road is private from just west of Third Street all the way to Seventh. But if you go down and look at the houses, the first house from there has access from Third.
Yeah.
The next house has access from Fourth, the house on the other side has access to Fourth, then you come to 81 Sequatum, which is kind of landlocked, then the next parcel down, I own, which has access to Seventh. So this is really the only parcel that, in and of that whole strip, that is kind of stuck. And that's why we agreed to do it, because I happened to build the house for 21 Fourth Street, so I became very good friends with them, so when Joe and Karen at 81 approached me with it, I said, well, let me talk to them, we're buying 12 Pleasant Valley, let's see what we can come up with, because I understand your fear, because we have the same, the same fear, but it actually is the only house along that whole strip that, it just does not have winter access.
The other, so the other houses have other access that?
Correct. Natural access from one of the finger streets.
If Fifth Street had been constructed, we wouldn't be sitting here having this conversation.
Correct.
Okay. And God forbid we have a wellfleet situation, like the poor couple that. Exactly. Died down there. The other question that I had, I think I, I read the Board of Health concerns were about the septic system. Yes. For 12 Pleasant Valley, and this is, the proposed easement is going to go over that? The septic system is going to be removed? It's. Prior to that construction of whatever gra, whatever the easement is going to be made of? The reason I ask is. It's being revised with H20 loading to the leaching facility. Okay, so not the septic. The reason for my question is, as the chief said, this would allow heavy fire trucks and ambulance to get down there, but you don't want to park the new Quint that's coming in on top of the aging septic tank that's going to.
Right, so the old septic is being completely removed.
Okay.
A new septic system, Title V compliant, will be put in.
In a different location than underneath the?
Part of it will be underneath, but only, I believe, the actual concrete structures and things that could not be crushed. It will be built for loading, whatever portion is under the easement.
Okay.
I have a copy of that.
Thank you.
If anybody wants it. That's the copy of the proposed septic.
I submitted that also, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. So it goes alongside the easement?
Right, it's right along the edge.
Yeah.
If I may.
Yep.
Has the Health Department approved the new plan yet?
Yes. It did last week.
Okay.
Thank you. Katie?
Just a brief question. Shouldn't Sequatum Road, I notice it says also known as Lake Drive and First Avenue?
I don't have the solution for everything, Mr. McCarlin. That's the way, that's the way it's been.
That's, that's the way the plan is.
Plan shows First Drive, First Avenue, I'm sorry.
I'm thinking in terms of emergency response, fire emergency response.
So Chief Clark did ask that if, if in fact the board, you know, agreed to this, that we have a special note made for this house and what will be my house one down, that access is no longer on Sequatum. They did the same thing on what is now 21 Fourth Street that used to be 77, they changed it so it was 21 Fourth Street, so it was clear where, you know, where emergency access would take place from.
Are you saying it should be, he wants it changed from 81 Sequatum to?
He, he said you would not have to change the house address, but he would actually change in the computer, they have the ability to add, when it comes up, it would be 81 Sequatum accessed through 12 Pleasant Valley. I, I'm paraphrasing a little bit, I don't.
If they had to make a call on it.
Exactly. It would instantly come up on everyone's screen as that.
I can just say that I'm working as the liaison on the 911, and we would put a formal request in for that thing to go everywhere, Florida counties.
There any comments from the public? State your name, please.
My name is in state, and I live at 218, right opposite that. The only reason they're putting this road in is they want to close Sequatum Road down, which a lot of people walk and go across the beaches and whatnot. I live at 218, now they're going to put a new road in there. In front of my house is known as, my last name is Leroux, is known as Leroux's Lake. 300 days of the year, I have a puddle of water in front of my house. Now with this road going in, I'm going to get even more water. What, what is this? And their main purpose is to close Sequatum Road so they can, so no one can get by there, because I was told this by the people from Venezuela. They wanted to close it last year right at Third Street. This is their main reason for doing this. It's all I have to say.
Thank you.
What, sir, could you give us your address again? I, you said. You said it...
Six Pleasant Valley Road, Lot 218.
So, it's not on...
So, he's across the street.
Thank you.
Question, Bill. Within the land court's deed, does, do the people at like 85 have a right of way across that road?
In the...
So, I own 85, across which road?
Sequatum.
So, so I, I would be in the same situation as 81 Sequatum where I own...
Both sides.
Both sides of the road.
But within the land court, did they give a right of way to other people to use Sequatum?
They did not give any specific right of way, but they do what the, they did what the land court generally does, which is subject to the rights of whatever others may exist in Fifth Street.
Sequatum, is that originally a town road or is that a county road?
Sequatum, it's not a, not a county road.
It's an ancient way, supposedly, or I just call it.
It's probably a town, or it could be an ancient way or it could be a town road.
See, Sequatum Road runs from 124...
Sir, if you could go to the microphone to speak.
Thank you.
That's okay.
I'm not going to bite you.
Sequatum Road runs from 124 to Seventh. It's paved up to Third Street.
Right.
But Sequatum roads are in there. I go by there all the time. Now, if I get a big puddle of water in the front of my house, which happens often, sometimes I can't drive to it, I go down Sequatum Road, I go down Fort Street. They've tried to close Fort Street many times. I'm not saying them, but people that live there, they put barriers and whatnot.
Is Fort Street paved?
Yeah, Fort Street is a Fort Street beach there too.
And it's one of the access points. And I believe what he's referring to is that the person who owns 73 Sequatum consistently parks in the middle of Fourth Street and blocks access for people.
They block the road all the time.
And whatnot. But, but that said, Fourth Street, not Fifth Street because it's completely owned, but Third Street, Fourth Street, Seventh Street, each have beaches at the end of them. There are deeded rights down those roads. There are no specific deeded rights along Sequatum, but there are deeded rights along of the fingers because originally a beach was built at the end of it. And I think they took the entire subdivision out back and broke it up into sections. So, depending on where you live, you have access to a specific group of beaches according to all the, all the deeds.
This is what happens, Mr. Chairman, when you have old, old subdivisions, not the well-planned subdivisions that you have now. So, you kind of have the backdoor at shoehorn.
Is Fourth Street town road approved?
I don't know as it is, but it exists on the ground.
Yeah, I believe it's a town for the first couple of hundred feet, and then it turns over. But it is considered an access point.
I'd like to know if it was private or...
But Fourth Street isn't part of our, yeah, our piece at all. I mean, we weren't accessing or connecting with that whatsoever. Fifth Street is not a town road or built, it's private and owned 100% all the way around.
Right.
But Fourth Street is a completely different entity and has homes, you know, all along it.
So, sir, while you were still up there...
Yes.
You're telling me that whoever lives at 73 Sequaten Road is treating Fourth Street like his friend yet?
Yeah. He's using it as his driveway for the home. I mean, many a times I've been, I can't get down the end of the street. And the old people in the neighborhood, they have, they have, take kayaks or canoes and whatnot. They can't get by because the vehicles are there. They blocked the road off.
And did you say, sir, that part of it is, is blacktop and part is not?
What they want to do is close Sequatum Road off.
Correct. But that has nothing to do with us. We have not blocked that road, we don't live on that road. We have nothing to do with that. But I have seen it, I will say that.
Their use of...
They do use it like their driveway. Yeah, I would agree with that statement.
I'd like to know if that is going to be, I'd like Bill to let us know if that is considered an ancient way, ancient right of way, and is, can it be closed?
Which, which street are you talking about?
Fourth. Sequatum.
Sequatum.
From 21 and past the property that you're planning on.
With all due respect, Mr. Stoltz, there are many roads like this in the town of Howard and on Cape Cod that drive conveyancers like myself crazy because you want to know what's the legal status. And if the town has never taken it as a town road, the question is, when does a road become a public road? And that's what we refer to as an ancient way. Well, that's when it's established by usage for more than 50 years and then you have to go to the Superior Court and have it get a decree that yes, now that is legally an ancient way. In the meantime, and that doesn't happen very often, that anybody bothers to go to court about it. In the meantime, it's just, it is what it is. It's just established by usage. So, where it actually exists on the ground and people use it and it's shown on the subdivision plan, you'd be hard pressed to, to say that somebody didn't have a right in it. But much easier with Fifth Street where we own both sides and it doesn't exist on the ground and nobody's ever used it.
I understand the Fifth Street. Sequatum is the key, I think. I used that road 60 years ago.
Right. So, I can't answer your question, black and white, is it a public road or not? In my opinion, it's still a private road, shown on a plan, never been taken by eminent domain by the town.
But within, within the deed from land court, is there any right of way given to other lots?
Not specifically. It just says, subject to whatever rights of others may exist in First Avenue as shown on the plan. The land court kind of bails on it.
Yeah.
Kicks the can down the road, literally.
What's on Lot C and parcel two? Are there, are there homes on those parcels?
Lot C.
Those just beach access?
No, just, just water access. Which is typical along all of Sequatum, all the way.
But people own that property.
It's, it's...
81 Sequatum owns it.
It's, it's, I don't want to say always, but I'm tempted to say always owned by the person on the other side of Sequatum.
I see, I see.
Sequatum did at one point go all the way down, I think it's to 10th Street or whatnot, but it has been closed off because it was a private way. It was closed off along the way. You can still see the telephone poles going down.
Originally went right back to Long Pond Drive.
Yeah, yeah. But systematically, it had been closed off because it was a private, private road.
I have nothing further. Move to close the public hearing.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman, had you finished with the public comment? Was there anybody else that wanted to speak?
Is there anyone else who would like to speak to this?
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Roll call, David?
Aye.
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 Move to adopt the following proposed findings. One, the alternative access proposed is superior to the existing access, which is impassable in the winter months. Two, the alternate, alternate access is proposed to be cleared to a width of 16 feet, both height and width. Three, access is proposed from an easement with a lot having the required legal frontage of 150 feet for the RR zoning district. Four, there will be no nuisance or serious hazard to vehicles or pedestrians.
I think you skipped one, Mr. ...
Sorry. The use is consistent with the zoning court code and will not adversely affect the neighborhood.
Motion and second, roll call vote, David?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Brett?
Aye.
Aye.
Move to approve with conditions the use special permit for alternative access pursuant to the Code of the Town of Howard, 325-18P and 325-51 via an easement from 12 Pleasant Valley Road, map 101, parcel X8-217 for use by 81 Sequaten Road, map 101, parcel W2-A, based on the fact that the application meets the necessary requirements and criteria for approval pursuant to the Code of the Town of Howard with the above findings and following conditions. One, the special permit decision shall be recorded at the Registry of Deeds. Two, any changes to the site plan shall be, shall be subject to further planning board review.
Second.
We have a vote in a second, roll call, David?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Brett?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Next up, we have, I'd like to open the public hearing. I'd like to open the public hearing. And we have PB 2019 dash 08A and B Lindsey and Mary Ellen Strode as owners, care of William Crowell, Esquire representative, cease approval of two. Use special permit with waivers. The applications seek to convert the existing residential detached garage workshop structure as follows. A, create a one-bedroom first floor accessory apartment. And B, create a separate detached residential accessory building with one bedroom on the second floor. The applications are pursuant to the Code of Town of Howard, 325-51.h for the accessory apartment and 325-18P and 325-51 for the residential accessory building with bedrooms. The property is located at 362 Great Western Road, map 38, parcel N1 in the RM zoning district. Mr. Cole, whenever you are ready.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Unfortunately, these folks are stuck with me again on this one. Mr. and Mrs. Strode could not attend tonight. It was a, had a medical appointment in Boston today. They were going to be here two weeks ago, very much want to be here, but they could not change the medical appointment in Boston today. So, they're not present. Mr. Strode, as some of you may remember, was the chairman of the Howard Conservation Commission for many years and provided good public service to the town. He also has a local business and he and his wife reside at the property in question. There is a detached residential structure that shows on the plan by Moran Engineering that was dated January 25, 2007. Now, with the permission of the town planner, she allowed us to use, in order to defray expenses, she allowed us to use this plan because it's the same plan. Nothing's changed as far as the footprint of the, of the garage. And this garage was the subject of a Board of Appeals decision that I submitted as part of your packet, everybody has seen that, back in '07, where the Board of Appeals granted a variance to allow for this structure to be 10 feet from the northerly lot line, from the real lot line. Whereas it was, the code at that time, the bylaw would have required 20, but you can see how the lot narrows. So, the Board of Appeals granted the variance for that structure to be located where it is today. So, nothing's changed. So, she said that the 2007 plan by Moran Engineering would be sufficient. There were some building plans at that time that, in '07, that Mr. Strode had submitted. I don't know if you've seen copies of those, but you probably don't want to look at them too long. They're a little bit hard to read and have a lot of information on them. So, Ms. Greenhouse asked if we could submit the hand-drawn plans that you have in front of you, and she said those would be sufficient as well, as opposed to having an architect draw them up. Do you each have copies of those plans?
Yeah, they're in the packet.
So, what the Strodes are seeking tonight is a special permit to allow them to convert this garage into more of a family structure. They want the first floor to be a detached accessory apartment for, I believe it's Mrs. Strode's mother and father, to live on the first floor. They're retired elderly and want to live with, they want their folks to live with them. The second story is to be a detached accessory residential structure with one bedroom as shown on the second floor plan.
Mr. Cole, flip that back. So, is that going to be on top?
Yes, directly on top of the accessory apartment. So, there's no real structural change taking place, certainly to the footprint or the exterior of the building. And then for the accessory apartment on the first floor, as you can see from the plans by Mr. Strode, it would be 800 square feet, which is less than the 900 maximum for an accessory apartment. It would have a living area, a bathroom, a kitchen area, and one bedroom. As you know, two bedrooms are allowed, but they're only asking for one bedroom there. So, if they weren't doing anything with the second floor, that would be the end of the, of the petition. So, I submitted two petitions to be considered as one. I know Ms. Banda wasn't thrilled with that, but that's the way Ms. Greenhouse told me to do it. So, we have A and B here. And A is for the accessory apartment and B is for the detached accessory residential structure with a bedroom but no kitchen. I know the Board of Health had concerns about the septic system in their comments when you get to it, but there's no kitchen on that second floor. And that's for the Strodes' children and grandchildren, for overflow when they visit. So, Ma and Pa are going to be on the first floor in their apartment year round. And then when the kids visit, the grandkids visit, then they will stay in the, in the main dwelling, but also sleep on the second floor.
Sounds like my house, Willie.
Yes. It's the way families are supposed to function.
You hope.
So, there's no square footage limit on a detached structure with bedrooms, but obviously it's the same, same size. But the actual square footage, as he indicates, is only 576 square feet. So, you come up the stairs, there's a bathroom, and there's an open area, and that's where the beds will be for, for the bedroom. We meet, we're, we're under the maximum building coverage, 20%, or under the site coverage, 30%, no increase, no change in the footprint, no adverse effect on the neighborhood, no increase, substantial increase in traffic, noise, fumes, odors, congestion, or the like. Not a substantial detriment to the property values in the, in the neighborhood. And adequate and appropriate facilities are provided for the proper, operation of the proposed use as required by the bylaw. And each, each of them would have... use as required by the bylaw, and each of them would have the required parking spaces. So, we would ask that you grant the special permit this evening for one special permit for the detached accessory apartment, and a second special permit for the detached residential accessory structure with one bedroom. Thank you.
Planning?
I have no questions.
The application was submitted before the legal notice for the accessory apartment zoning amendment was first published in the newspaper. It would be my recommendation that the board move forward with the request for the accessory special permit, as well as the bedroom in the accessory building. After review of the application, both special permit requests appear to meet all the requirements for the board to issue a special permit. A proposed and recommended condition would be that the bedroom on the second floor shall not, or at any time, be used by any party occupying or residing in the first-floor apartment. The second-floor bedroom is to be used in conjunction with the principal dwelling only. It is my recommendation that along with traditional conditions, a condition regarding the Health Department comments be included. Staff recommends approval of the waivers requested.
Okay, right. Any planning board comments? Bill?
I have a question, and it's on the access to the bedroom upstairs and the apartment downstairs, where it has a central hallway, which is going to be used by both the upstairs bedroom and the downstairs apartment. And in turn, at any time, that upstairs bedroom could be used as part of the apartment. So, there's no separation, only one door.
It's unfortunate that Mr. Strode's not here to answer a practical question of that nature. I believe in my discussions with him that there is going to be, and it may show on the larger previous plans, that there's going to be a staircase on the exterior.
I have one more question.
Bill?
Right here.
Right, so this one, that shows it outside?
Yes, thank you.
Going to the...
That's the one, yes.
And that is going to be?
That's the intention, yes.
We'd have to probably have that as part of it.
So, I think that's the reason for Ms. Greenhouse's condition that...
Never be used.
Right, that the party, that second floor cannot be used at any time by the party occupying or residing in the first floor. Use this kind of generic word, but they want to go upstairs and say good night to their grandchildren.
Right, that's what I'm saying about the common hallway downstairs allows that.
Yes.
It allows somebody later on to turn it into a two-bedroom accessory apartment without you even knowing about it.
Well, that's what conditions are for. I mean, I understand, and I know how difficult it is for this board and the Board of Appeals. They don't want to be bedroom police, et cetera, but complaints can be made, inspections can occur from the building department, and ferret that out if there is, that use is taking place, and then they get a cease and desist notice and threat of a fine on a daily basis.
Historically, once approved, they never see it again.
Sorry, couldn't hear that, Mr. Strode.
Yeah, exactly. No, this is A, that's B.
Do you have any questions?
No.
Any questions, Mary?
I don't at this time.
I have a question. The plan that I'm looking at shows, I don't know what you have, Counselor, but it looks like two garage doors below grade.
Yes, yes.
From the east elevation.
Mm-hmm.
So, this is currently, this structure currently exists.
Yes.
And it's used now, parking two cars underneath, below grade, and then a workshop or something on the first floor, second floor empty right now, and this is...
Right.
Okay. So, the fact that there's a two-car garage underneath this structure, which is currently not used as a residence, are there any issues or concerns from that perspective?
The plan I have shows that the ramp is there, but the windows and the place of the doors.
Below grade?
No, not below grade, on first grade.
Oh, because I...
I don't have that plan you have.
Oh, yeah, I'm looking at the, it's hard to see, but on the far right, that picture, it looks like there are two garage spaces currently existing.
Could qualify for off-street parking for the occupants of the structure.
Okay.
Greg, are you asking for a building code separation information like that?
Well, I, yeah, I guess I'm not really sure of the question to ask, quite honestly.
The building inspector would automatically do that.
Okay.
It'd be fire code and all that.
Yeah, okay.
He would be required to file a change of use permit and bring it to code.
Okay, and that, this would be that case because it's currently not used as a residential structure, it's a workshop, so you'd have to file it, okay.
Thank you.
The conditions are in...
Okay.
Any comments from the public at all? Here?
We did have a comment from the Health Department. So, there is a condition, a proposed condition, to make it subject to the Board of Health. Any concerns with that from you? Because that's, I'm concerned about the fact that it says it's a two-bedroom, bedroom deed restriction on it, so, and you're adding two bedrooms to an existing two-bedroom restriction. That's my interpretation of that section.
All I can tell you is that Mr. Strode is aware of the deed restriction, and aware of whatever he would have to do to make the Board of Health happy.
And I guess I have no concerns as long as we keep in the...
There's no intention to have a full kitchen, he can't, on the second floor.
Do we make that a condition?
Sure, there is a proposed condition in here that it would be subject to the Board of Health, and I'm comfortable with that. My concern was that we're, to me, it seemed like there were two different items with the Health Department concerns. One, that it's currently a two-bedroom deed restriction. Secondly, that the accessory dwelling without the kitchen, if there was a kitchen, then it would need also, it would need a new two-tank. But it doesn't say whether the two bedrooms added to the existing house would need an upgrade on the septic anyway, so that's my concern, that as long as we keep that condition in, that they would have to comply with the Health, with any Health Department issues, then I guess I don't have a concern.
Mary, if I may, those two bedrooms are okay. The septic accounted for those two individuals.
Oh, okay.
It was just really, you can't have more than the most two that they have.
If I can, thank you, Kate. That restriction pertains to the, what I called the garage at the beginning, this structure only, doesn't pertain to the primary residence.
Understood.
So, we're having accessory apartment, one bedroom, upstairs, one bedroom, total of two. If we had a kitchen, which we're not, then she's saying that Megan was saying we have to have three at that point, or a compartmentalized septic tank.
Thanks, Kate.
So, there's a new septic system going in for this...
I don't have the file in front of me, this is a while ago, but I believe it has its own system.
Yes.
It has its current system now.
For the garage.
I don't see, okay, I got it.
As written, it's fine.
You can barely see it.
I know.
As written, it's fine.
It's on the left.
Done. Behind the trees.
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Did you ask for a public comment?
Any? Yes, I did.
You did, yeah.
Yeah. Closing the public hearing. David, vote?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, and I say aye.
With regard to PB 2019-08A, special permit for accessory apartment, motion to approve the waivers pursuant to 400-6 of any and all commercial or residential requirements of the bylaw that are not applicable to this petition.
Second.
We have a vote in a second. David?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
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 Vote to adopt the following findings of fact. One, to approve the following findings of fact as follows: one, the parcel is in the R-M zoning district; two, the apartment unit is 800 square feet; three, it is the owner's intent to continue to reside and occupy the main dwelling on the property, and an affidavit has been filed; four, minimum requirements have been met for setbacks, area, and bulk; five, the driveway... Just give me a minute, Mr. Chairman. Driveway will provide sufficient off-street parking, which meets the minimum requirements; and six, the application as submitted does not adversely affect local traffic or create traffic hazards.
Second.
We have a vote in a second. David?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
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 To approve with conditions and waivers, case PB 2019-8A, Lindsey and Mary Ellen Strode, for a use special permit pursuant to the Code of the Town of Howard, 325-51.h, to convert the first floor of the existing residential detached garage workshop structure into a one-bedroom, first-floor accessory apartment for the property located at 362 Great Western Road, map 38, parcel N1 in the RM zoning district. The approval is based on the fact that the application meets the necessary requirements and criteria for approval pursuant to the Code of the Town of Howard with the above findings and the following conditions: one, the owner shall maintain occupancy in one of the units as required by town code; two, the applicant shall comply with all Board of Health requirements; three, the bedroom on the second floor of the detached, of the detached accessory structure shall not, or at any time, be used by any party occupying or residing in the first-floor apartment. The second-floor bedroom is to be used in conjunction with the principal dwelling only; four, the special permit decision shall be recorded at the possible county registry of deeds; five, any changes in the plan shall be subject to the further planning board review.
Second.
We have a vote in a second. David?
Aye.
Bill?
I have a question.
Yes.
I would like to put on that, that that exterior stairway be part of the approval.
I accept that amendment.
I second it.
Okay, we have a vote on the amendment to the original...
Vote to amend, though.
Vote to amend. David?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And now, a vote on the motion. David?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
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 Now, with respect to PB 2019-08B, vote to adopt, motion to approve the waivers pursuant to 400-6 of any and all commercial or residential requirements of the bylaw that are not applicable to this petition.
Second.
We have a vote in a second. David?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
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 Motion to approve the findings of fact as follows: one, the parcel is in the RM zoning district; two, the use is consistent with the zoning code and will not adversely affect the neighborhood; three, the site is an appropriate location for such use; four, the second floor of the accessory structure will not contain a stove, and therefore it is not a kitchen, and is not an accessory apartment as defined in 325-2, word usage and definitions, quote, dwelling single family with accessory apartment, unquote; five, the bedroom on the second floor of the detached accessory structure shall not, or at any time, be used by any party occupying or residing in the first-floor apartment. The second-floor bedroom is to be used in conjunction with the principal dwelling only; six, the proposed parking area will provide sufficient off-street parking, which meets the minimum requirements of the town code, and as such, there will be no nuisance or serious hazard to vehicles or pedestrians.
Second.
We have a vote in a second. David?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
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 Move to approve with conditions and waivers, case PB 2019-08B, Lindsey and Mary Ellen Strode, for a use special permit pursuant to the Code of the Town of Howard, 325-51p, to create a separate detached residential accessory building with one bedroom on the second floor of an existing accessory structure pursuant to the Code of the Town of Howard, 325-18p, and 325-51 for the residential accessory building with bedrooms for the property located at 362 Great Western Road, map 38, parcel N1, in the RM zoning district. The approval is based on the fact that the application meets the necessary requirements and criteria for approval pursuant to the Code of the Town of Howard with the above findings and the following conditions: one, the application shall comply with the Board of Health requirements; two, the bedroom on the second floor of the detached accessory structure shall not, or at any time, be used by any party occupying or residing in the first-floor apartment. The second-floor bedroom is to be used in conjunction with the principal dwelling only; three, the second floor of the accessory structure will not contain a stove, and therefore it is not a kitchen, and is not an accessory apartment pursuant to 325-2, word usage and definition, quote, dwelling single family with accessory apartment, close quote, and shall not contain a kitchen; four, the special permit decision shall be recorded at the possible county registry of deeds; five, any change in the plan shall be subject to further planning board review.
Second for the purpose of discussion.
Discussion?
Mr. Stoltz, would you feel comfortable having the same condition on this? So, I would suggest we offer an amendment and also add a number six, that the outdoors staircase as shown on the plans included in the application also be maintained.
Accept the amendment.
Second.
So, we have a vote in a second on the amendment first, for the staircase, outdoor staircase, just like dot A. David?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And now, a vote on the amended motion. David?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
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 Try not to bring just garden variety vanilla fettins to the board.
Of course not.
Stretch us both. Thank you for all your time and effort and attention.
Thank you. To open the public hearing, for PB 2019-9, Ten Yen LLC and 554 Street Bar LLC as applicant tenant, care of Michael Jasek. HP Property Investment LLC as owner seeks approval of site plan with special permit with waivers and a modification of previously approved site plan special permit, PB 2013-14, to establish a restaurant use along with the existing restaurant, fast-food take-use, and to add outdoor seating at the front of the building, which would include hard and softscape features for a property located at 554 Route 28, map 14, parcel T7, and the CB, VC overlay and RM zoning districts. The application is pursuant to the Code of Town of Howard, 325-51, 51.l. and 55. Hello, where's yours?
So, we are Ten Yen. We were going to take over the Bucky space and move into the space this year, but we decided that, for a couple of different reasons, that we were just going to expand the Ten Yen space to the full seating capacity allowed by the septic system, in order to give one more year to the guests. order to give one more year to the guests that didn't get a chance to eat there in the prior two years. So, we were originally six seats. After taking over the Bucky space, we've moved to 40 seats, and our plan was to do 20 inside and 20 outside on the patio in fair weather. So, that's pretty much it. We had a strange, I don't know, contingency in the site plan originally that said that anytime that anything was going to change, it was subject to a full site plan review. So that was another one of the reasons that we did this, was to get that adjusted. So, we didn't have to do this every time that we wanted to make an adjustment to the restaurant space.
Okay. As far as planning, staff and lane?
Yeah. The proposed outdoor seating is located entirely on the subject property. There is no change in the required number of parking spaces. As the site is existing and there is no change to site coverage since the original approvals, the requested waiver appears to be reasonable. As of this date, only one letter from Nabutter has been received, and this letter is in support of this request. The letter will be read into the record at the hearing. Did you guys get that one?
Copy.
It's right here.
Where is it?
While you're working on... Did I ask you a question?
Certainly.
I'm looking at the front of your premises now. Tenyen has been there for a while.
Yes, third year.
And you're working on the right-hand side.
Yes.
Used to be a delicatessen or something.
A coffee shop.
Whatever it was.
Yeah.
Okay. Now, tell me what you're gonna do in the long run there. I heard you that you're not gonna do it all right now, but...
We would like to turn it into a standard restaurant, a la carte seating, have some hot food, some sushi, and the same amount of seats, so 40 because the septic wouldn't change if we opened up that space. But, we feel like at Tenyen, because of our confined space, there's a lot of restrictions that we have. We can't have open flame. We can't have like a range or an oven or anything like that because we have no access to the outside. So in order to create more food, use a greater depth of and breadth of ingredients and techniques, we would need a hood vent and we would need open flame.
But, it's not your intention to do that this season?
No, no, not at all.
So all you're gonna do is reopen Tenyen, and really what you're always here, only here for tonight, is to essentially re-approve the...
The seats.
The outdoor seating.
Yes.
And it could be in front of both places.
Yes, yes. Well, we don't intend on doing that because if we had the seating in front of the entrance, then it would create a barrier of people. So, we have plenty of room to have it all in front of the Bucky space without impeding either of the entryways at Tenyen.
I have the record. I have the letter.
You do have the letter?
Yep. Dear Planning Board, I received Nabutter notice for the Tenyen LLC public hearing, and would like to offer a letter of support. As a past planner, I feel that a strong sidewalk presence is one of the most important elements of a successful village. When the owner of Tenyen Building requested site plan approval several years ago, the owner at the time seemed more interested in his overall building approval rather than use of the strip of the land between the building and the public right-of-way. Following that approval, the bakery and the other businesses placed benches which were quite successful, though they did not have an official approval. I feel now that is the time to correct that situation. A reasonable amount of outdoor seating would add vitality to the property and to Route 28 as a whole. I hope that the planning board will be able to approve the applicant's request for outdoor seating at the front of the building. David Spitz, 16 Cross Street, Howardport. I'll continue with planning comments.
Right, thank you.
There should be a clear representation of what the enclosure will be for the outdoor seating and will be, and how access in and out of the patio area will be controlled. Condition two and three of the original site plan for case 2013-14 states, "Any change of use for the subject property will require a new site plan to be submitted showing all new proposed aspects for determination of zoning compliance. If any changes to the site plan are required as a condition of approval by another approving authority, a revised site plan showing all the changes shall be committed for compliance." It is the staff's recommendation that these conditions be amended to read as follows. "Any changes of use of the subject property that increase the need for additional parking shall require that a modified site plan be filed with the planning board pursuant to section 325-55. And three, any changes to the site plan which would change the exterior of the building, the grounds or the parking area, shall require that a modified site plan be filed with the planning board pursuant to 325-55. Such a change in the conditions would allow for an allowable use by right to be approved by the building commissioner as a change of use. However, if a proposed use requires a special permit, use special permit, only the use special permit would be required, but not a modified site plan. The request before the board appears to be appropriate."
Thank you. Planning board comments? Bill? Joe?
My question to you is, where would you put two and three into the proposed findings?
So, the two and three would be a change to the original approval for site plan that was under case number 2013-14.
And it's, I believe it's already in there, Joe. Those amendments to those conditions are under two and three.
Right here.
F is in Frank, two and three, on page two at the bottom.
Okay. Can I have just a minute?
Mm-hmm.
So, how do I put that in?
It's already there.
So I don't have to change anything?
No, no.
Just this one?
Just...
No, just read. It's my understanding that the way it's set up, you have the vote on the waivers, you have the vote on the proposed findings, then the site plan review and all that. The two and three were put at the bottom of that.
They're part of the site plan...
Part of the site plan review.
Review of special permit.
And I have just one question. The gentleman back here with the beard?
Me?
Nope, no bigger beard than you. Do you have one of these... I know, and, well, I don't know. Do you have one of these permits for your premises? By the way, Boyd, he owns the other restaurant, and am I correct?
Yeah.
I thought it was you.
If you could just state your name and...
Neil Strangfeld, owner, Mad Minnow Bar and Kitchen, Howardport.
Do we have...
You have seating outside your premises?
Yep. Yeah, so we do have, we are permitted.
That was my question.
In the original permitting for that redevelopment property back in 2013, the outdoor seating was approved.
That's all I want to know. Thank you. Didn't mean to embarrass you, but I thought it was.
Mr. Chairman?
You're all set?
Yeah.
Mary?
I'm all set.
The outdoor seating is, I thought I saw something, I think, previous meeting that continued planter boxes?
Yes, so...
That would be part of the perimeter delineation?
Yeah, I would say the majority of the barrier. So, we looked at what was available for the barrier, and we had certain objectives in mind. You know, while before it was a bakery and it was primarily coffee, we do intend to serve alcoholic beverages outside. So, it was really important for us to have it to be a more substantial barrier than it was before. And so, looking at those things, obviously there's wrought iron, there's floating fences that you fill with water and things like that. But, I feel like because we have more bars on the street, we needed to have something that was more substantial in terms of delineation. So, by getting these boxes built, we'll be able to fill them up with sand, and then flowers that are tall. So people won't be able to walk over them, hand drinks through them. It's much more, it's just better, and it looks...
So you clearly define where you're serving outside, but using this approach?
That would be the guard all around, yes. And so that way, you won't be able to walk over it, you won't be able to really, you know what I mean? And it kind of represents what Route 28 was before with the flowers on the street, so...
And people can still come up and, I'm sorry.
Oh, go ahead.
And people can still make their way up and down the sidewalk.
Sir, it doesn't touch the sidewalk at all.
I understand.
So, all of those planters, for lack of a better word, are gonna be butted against each other. There's not gonna be a foot or two of space.
Yeah, as best we can, and anything that we do have extra, so if they butt on a corner, maybe we'll have a chain or something like that. But it'll definitely be more substantial than any of the other fences that are, you know, on 28 right now in our area.
So, that's driving to my question, that there will be no ingress or egress to the restaurant itself proper through the outdoor seating. You'll have to go through the front doors physically into the building, into your restaurant bar, and then out a door
Exactly. Yeah, so in order to get service outside, you'll have to see somebody inside first.
Okay.
Correct.
And I'd just throw out that any signage would have to comply with the...
Yes.
Okay. Only because we had the private sidewalk and public sidewalk and all those...
And your sign came up.
So I have a couple of questions. One, have you gone back to the Board of Selectmen to revise your liquor license yet?
We have our liquor license for this, for this year.
That includes the, that includes the outdoor seating area?
Yes, so we have our common effect for that.
Okay, so you, so you have, so you've already done that permitting?
Yeah, yes.
Just one comment for me. You know, our town planner had suggested that there was more specific enclosure for the outdoor seating area and the access. So, one of the conditions that I'm supportive is that you'd have to provide us with a, provide the town planner with a subsequent plan, and she would have the authority to approve. So, I'd be comfortable as long as that condition... It's already there. It's already there. It's a first, it's a first, it's a first condition on the site plan review special permit.
Oh, I see, okay, thank you.
I just wanted to point that out, that, you know, I love the planter boxes, but I do just want, want to give our town planner the ability to kind of review that in its final form so that they're, you know, she's comfortable that the enclosure is sufficient. So...
And I would assume...
I just wanted to point that out. I didn't know if you were aware of that or not.
I think that's more than reasonable. We're trying to do something that's above and beyond what the minimum would be, so, of course.
I just wanted to point that out for the record.
And I assume the license givers, the Board of Selectmen, are concerned about access and egress in terms of the use of the license?
Well, that, if I may, that was part of my concern with the license, because the liquor license has to have a defined, just defined space for where liquor can be served and consumed. So, I was just concerned if he's already done that, then I would, I would think that area is already kind of defined in his liquor license. And I think this condition that Charlene had proposed in her staff report really just gives us the opportunity to make sure that it's sequestered enough that, you know, you're not kind of...
If I might...
I have a question.
I'm sorry. If I understand, did I hear you say that in order for Joe Patron to want to come and sit on your newly created front seating area, they've got to come into your restaurant?
Yes.
Got to physically come in the building and then come back out?
I would say yes, yeah, they would. I mean, unless we were...
People can't walk in off the street.
Into the patio area.
That's my question.
Into the outdoor seating.
Yes, I mean, they could, but they wouldn't, I mean, they would be spotted, and then we would probably try to give them service. But I think that they would be most, are best served by alerting a hostess or somebody that they're there, and then we'll bring them menus and get them started.
Okay.
But if, if the conversation we just had about the planters encompassing the whole space and no space to get through, really there would be no way for somebody to walk in to the patio space, from what I understood you just explained. They would have to, there's no alternative. They've got to go into the building, into your space, and then out to the patio.
I mean, theoretically, they could snake their way through. We would see them, obviously. I mean, they could jump a fence. I mean, there's ways to get into it, but that's not the, not the way that we are intending to do it. We are just really just planning on having it be an extension of our inside seating, so...
Good, my question is...
I'm sorry. So there's no, or I guess I should ask, as part of the liquor license, is there any requirement for restriction from the street directly into the patio in order of drink, or...
No, so we'd only be able to serve drinks in the patio area or inside the bar. You know, we would have managers or door people, depending on the type of day that it is, you know, monitoring the area carefully to make sure that that doesn't happen, for sure.
Bill?
Okay, my question is according to this plan, that there is no, so is the patio fencing going to be six feet tall?
Not, maybe with the plants, six feet tall after they're...
So what is the fence gonna be? How tall would that be?
I would say probably between three and four feet. I mean, it's pretty, pretty tall.
That's, that's it there.
Yeah, something like that.
That's, that's the flower box?
Yes.
Now, the fences...
That's what we plan on making the fence out of, is the flower boxes.
So what's the, what's it a body to?
The fence is not, it doesn't really pertain to the scenario here. It's actually just...
It's just a picture of the box.
Exactly, it's just a picture of the boxes as we intend to build them.
So that box system is not against a fence?
No, no, freestanding.
On the sidewalk, as I understand.
I understand that.
Yeah, on the, on the brick area, not encroaching on the sidewalk.
The way you were talking, it was gonna be a fence with the, I thought, fence with the flower box.
So I guess that's where I'm coming from. I think our town planner has requested a plan that more clearly delineates what, what the barrier is gonna be to kind of delineate that outdoor seating area. I'm comfortable leaving that to her to approve, but it's a little, I will preface it by saying this is a little different than my experience in that normally I, my experience with liquor licenses is it normally happens after the site plan is approved. So, here we have a situation that the liquor, the liquor license is approved with an area, and we haven't yet approved the area yet. So, as long as, you know, as long as everybody on the board is comfortable that, that the applicant's gonna submit a plan that better shows what that area is, and everybody's comfortable with allowing Charlene Greenhalgh to kind of pass muster on yes or no on that kind of delineation, then, then I'm okay with it. But I do think, I tend to think serving alcohol on the street is gonna require a little bit more than a planter, and I get your point. It's, if it's something tall, it's gonna grow on a trellis maybe over time, then the trellis is my...
We're thinking like beach grasses, which are high and...
But it's starting out, I don't know that those, for me, I don't know that those would
Well, I mean, as they're pictured there, that's just the construction of the box.
Understood. I understand that.
I mean, I look at the hot stove across the street, and it's, it's a very basic fence that nobody really looks over it, like people change their kids on those tables, like, you know, I feel like we're really trying to make it more substantial.
You don't want to go down that road in the history, in the history of that fence.
So, you know, we want to, we want to make it nice, and if you have a better option for us, then we're more than happy to agree.
We would just like to see, I think, a plan that shows exactly what you're gonna do right now. It's not shown on this plan.
Understood.
Showing us some boxes.
If I could speak to that, I think that's, pretty much Charlene will be the gatekeeper on this. Like, as far as whatever plan we come up with, it's got to abide, abide by and stick to basically what the Selectmen, I imagine, have. I kind of agree with you. I think it's kind of odd that you have approved for an outdoor space that doesn't exist yet.
I'd like to see the plan first.
But, um, maybe that speaks to the...
It's not the first, it's not the first one that's come this way.
Yeah, we could continue.
But I just, you know, pointed out for that reason. If I may, Mr. Chair, the, one of the conditions that was proposed by the town planner was that a plan showing the enclosure for the outside seating and access to the restaurant shall be submitted to the town planner for review and approval. Are you comfortable with, with that being a condition and giving the town planner the authority to kind of pass judgment on it? Okay, so that's the...
I'd like the planning board to approve a, a plan before we vote on this.
Mr. Chairman?
I don't like the open-ended part of it.
I know he's getting close to his season, but it would be my intention to continue this matter to the next hearing in order to clean up some of the things that Mr. Stoltz has asked about, and all of, I'm sure they're all gonna happen. has asked about, and, uh, all of, I'm sure they're all going to happen.
Yeah, I agree with everything you're doing. I just want to see the plan drawn.
Before it's...
Understood.
Before we pass it. And I, I expect, maybe that, I'm not sure of this, but I've done an awful lot of alcohol B, A, B, C work, and, uh, I expect you're also going to end up back in front of the Board of Selectmen in terms of your license and where you're going to put, use it. I mean, you currently, I don't think, have a license to serve out here.
He just said that he did.
I believe I do. I believe we do. We, we've, we started the process to try to get the whole space done, um, and then eventually it morphed into just the forty seats with ten yen, and I, I've been talking to Anstidele via email as much as I can, and I do believe that we got...
Okay.
Approval for that, but, I mean, if, if I'm mistaken, then I'd be happy to go in front of the Selectmen again if necessary.
Maybe between now and the next time we meet, you can check.
Absolutely.
Okay.
When's our next meeting?
Are you intending for the twenty-third?
Next meeting, whatever it is. Move to continue.
Can we just, is the twenty-third at six thirty? Not second a motion to continue?
I think it's the twenty-third.
Do you want to open it up to anybody?
Before we take the motion, any, uh, comment from the public?
I have a question too before we...
Good evening. Cindy Williams, Executive Director of the Howard's Chamber. I've actually been talking with Charlene on the phone to make sure that before I stood up, um, what Mike is proposing is everything that has been agreed upon, and the enclosure is very similar to some of the others that are out on the street, um, and everything is really already approved, so... Sorry, I'm trying to read this. Very okay with this. I can show you guys all if you need to. He's been continued twice now, and he's trying to open for the season. Everything that he's done is according to what everyone has asked for so far, so just trying to help this get going.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, um, I assume the liquor license from, that you've been before the Selectmen for, uh, specifies lighting and closure time or...
Yes, absolutely.
Alcohol serving time, so that...
Yeah, the common deck has that on it.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments from the public at all?
Just to kind of second what, uh, what was just said, a lot of these things do take substantial amount of time to get built, and I just wouldn't want it to push into his season too much. You know, I, as a business owner in town, I know that we have a very short window to make enough money to last the whole year, and if that window continues to get pushed further, then it might hurt the business chance. So, I would just ask that things be taken care of as quick as possible, understanding that all the details need to be covered, but just that in order to have a contractor build the boxes and get the chairs ready, do the lighting outside, um, if it's pushed until May first, that's already pushing past his opening possibilities. Thank you.
I just had one other question, and you still have a rear access to your premises, right?
We do.
Come in the side door and, and in from the rear?
We use it primarily as a service entrance, but we, it is, it is available, yes.
Public.
Absolutely.
Up to you, Mr. Chairman, I don't care. Put it over or not put it over.
I, oh, good. I, I would just like to say, I'm supportive of, of the effort, and I feel comfortable with having Charlene making that a condition, um, the request, and having her determine if it meets the requirements for the fencing.
I believe before we did have a motion for a continuance.
Did I make it?
I don't know that it was seconded, was it?
Yeah, I don't think...
No, Joe made it, I don't remember.
Joe made it, but it wasn't seconded yet.
I can withdraw that motion.
Well, entertain...
To close the public hearing, did we do that?
Well, so, if you're closing the public hearing, you're going to take a vote tonight?
That's what I'm thinking. After the most recent testimony. If you object to it, please speak up.
I don't, Mr. Stoltz had objected to that kind of condition, uh, to the Charlene condition, so...
Let's continue.
I just want to see a plan. I see two or three different plans in front of me, so I don't really know which one you're going to go for.
Yeah, so, the, the, there's a large one there from LDL. When we had originally decided that we wanted to take over the whole space, um, we didn't realize we needed to do a site plan review, and based on what we heard... Yeah, so what we heard from, um, from Anstidele was we weren't going to be able to apply for the liquor license, which, as you know, takes a long time, and during that time, the government was shut down, and so everything was taking longer, even though it was just on the state level. And so, we were really afraid that if we weren't able to go before the planning board, that we wouldn't be able to apply for the liquor license, and then that way we wouldn't be able to apply for a loan. And so, we had to shift gears really late in the game, and that's why we decided that ten yen was going to be, we had to keep it as ten yen to apply for the liquor license again, uh, which is why we restructured ten yen and did a new...
Is this what you...
Yes.
Is this your version of what you're going to do?
Yes, so that is essentially what ten yen...
So, what's going to happen when you put, if you put the planters along this fence here, that's going to squeeze you in with hardly any room for walking, just to let you know?
Well, it's, so the walking would be more on the, uh, are you talking about for the public or for us to serve?
Oh, for the patio, this is the patio, right?
Yes.
So, when you drew this, it looks like it just had a fence there.
Yeah, so that would be the enclosure, whether it's, you know, uh, when that was drawn, we didn't know if we were going to do planters or what kind of barrier we were going to...
Yeah, that's what, I understand that, but if you put a planner in there, then you're, you're taking away two feet of your space.
Yes.
And that's going to hurt you, it could hurt me.
No, I, I totally understand. No, we, we've done the measurements, and we find that, uh, if we have, we have plenty of room for the planner and for five, four tops.
Even with, I mean, is that the actual...
It, it's the actual size to scale of the space, but it's not the actual size to scale of the tables and chairs.
Okay.
So, the tables and chairs are significantly smaller in real life than they look like on there. It's just the, the program we were using only had one size for those, so...
Total of twenty?
Twenty inside, twenty outside maximum, that's what we applied for, but we don't think that we may even get to that. Um, if we were eighteen and eighteen, then we'd probably be, be happy with that if that was our number, but twenty and twenty is the maximum.
That's a decision by the Board of Selectmen on the license, right?
The Health, the Health Department.
Health Department.
Yes, so they, they've approved us for twenty and twenty, uh, and we've said that we won't go over that.
What's your pleasure?
I mean, I, I'm, I'm fine with, I'm fine with Charlene making the judgment. I, I don't know where everybody else is coming down, so, um, I don't think Mr. Stoltz is...
Do, do we...
I concur.
David, you concur?
With Mary's position.
Okay.
Move to close the public hearing. Second.
I'd like to entertain a motion for...
I, I've moved to close the public hearing.
Second.
Seconded by Craig.
Yep, seconded by Craig.
So, you need a roll call on, on closing the public hearing?
Oh, uh, yes, I'm sorry. Uh, David, closing the public hearing?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
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 Move to approve the following waivers pursuant to four hundred, as requested based on the facts presented by the applicant. One, two sets of drainage calculations and map. Two, topography requirement. Three, specifications for lighting, curbing, fencing, retaining walls, parking, and wheel stops. Four, landscape plan.
Second.
We have a vote in a second. Uh, David?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Aye.
Move to adopt...
Sorry.
Move to adopt the following findings of fact. One, the property is located within the C-v, comma, V-c overlay in R-M zoning districts. Two, the proposed outdoor patio is located entirely within the C-v and V-c overlay districts. Three, the site has changed little except for the outdoor patio seating since approvals were received for this site in two thousand thirteen. Four, the waivers requested do not substantially derogate from the purpose and intent of this bylaw.
Second.
We have a vote in a second on the findings. David?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
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 Vote to approve the site plan review special permit. Over here.
Yep, right here.
Okay. To approve with conditions, uh, case number PB two thousand nineteen dash nine, ten yen LLC and five fifty-four Street Bar LLC, as applicant and tenant, a site plan review special permit with waivers and modifications of a previously approved site plan special permit, PB two thirteen, two thousand thirteen dash fourteen, pursuant to the code of the town of Howard, three twenty-five dash fifty-one, uh, fifty-one L and fifty-five, to establish a restaurant use along with the existing restaurant, fast food, take use, and to add outdoor seating at the front of the building, which would include hard and soft scape features for property located at five fifty-four Route twenty-eight, MAP fourteen, parcel T seven in the C-v, V-c, V-c overlay in R, R-dash-M zoning districts. The decision is based on the aforementioned findings of fact and the fact that the application meets the necessary requirements and criteria for approval pursuant to the code of the town of Howard with following conditions. One, a plan shall show the enclosure for the outside seating and access to the restaurant shall be submitted to the town planner for review and approval. Two, condition number two of the PB two thirteen fourteen decision shall be changed to read as follows, quote, "Any changes of use for the subject property that increases the need for additional parking shall require that a modified site plan be filed with the planning board pursuant to, uh, three twenty-five dash fifty-five." Three, condition three of the PB two thirteen fourteen decision, decision shall be changed to read as follows, quote, "Any changes to the site plan which would change the exterior of the building, the grounds of the parking, shall require that a modified site plan be filed with the planning board pursuant to three twenty-five dash fifty-five." Four, this decision shall be, uh, recorded at the battlefield registry of deeds. And five, the conformance of all review procedure requirements outlined pursuant to four hundred dash eighteen point G inspection certificate of completion and as-built plans of the code of the town of Howard shall be met.
Second.
We have a vote in a second on the special permit. David?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Craig?
Aye.
Aye.
Very much.
Good luck.
Good luck, appreciate it. See you this summer.
Yeah. Can't wait.
Yeah, it's closed. Oh, yeah, you get nothing, there's nothing else. Yeah, so you just have to... You just have to say the first item on the agenda.
Okay, uh, first item on the agenda, public meeting, new business covenant release request, PB two thousand eight dash three, Belmont Estates, Littlefield Pond Road.
She's getting it.
Yep.
I think this is done, isn't it? We just have to do it. Am I right?
Yeah, continue, but you didn't have enough, uh, people, members.
Because I was absent.
As was I.
So...
Someone was in sunny Florida.
No, not really. No, he still is.
He is, he still is in sunny Florida.
Yeah, we, we ended up, we actually ended up blooming, we, with the weather, we ended up looming and seeding, um, and I have the two lots sold, so we're looking for a lease so we can start construction and, and wrap it up.
All we have to do is find the release.
I've got the release, we'll need a vote.
We, you need a vote?
Yes.
Well, there are staff comments, right?
Yes.
So...
Staff comments, uh, have you already voted?
No. No. So, what I can tell you is that we have received the cashier's check. I've got it on deposit with the treasurer's office. He has signed his performance guarantee, and so we would need the planning board to sign on the performance guarantee as well as the covenant release, um, for the two...
Do you need, do you need a motion?
Yes, sir.
Well, there's, can I, can I ask a question? So, um, it looks like, I'm looking at the town planner report and recommendations, um, Charlene says ten and eleven are the final lots in the subdivision, still being held under covenant. The applicant's requested release of the lots, and there is some outstanding work to be completed, so the bounds still need to be placed.
Exactly, and...
Looming and seeding.
Looming and seeding's done.
Is done.
Dan Ojala is the engineer, um, the, he can do the as well, but he likes to put the bounds in first. I'm a modular home builder, so I didn't want the bounds. I mean, you're talking pennies, but I didn't want things disturbed, so I said just hold off, not knowing that that was part of the covenant. It's my fault for holding things up.
Right, so the calculation for the financial surety that we have accepted was the fifteen thousand. It included the looming and seeding because, while he has done it, he hadn't had it done at the time, so it hasn't had the inspection either, but he were going to maintain and retain that fifteen thousand till the final sign-off. So, we are swapping the covenant release for the financial surety, which we already have on deposit.
And what else is included in that besides, uh, looming?
The three items were placement of the remaining bounds and the as-built plans.
Looming and seeding in there.
No roadwork at all?
No roadwork. No roadwork.
And, and you gave a year, which, I mean, this will be wrapped up in three, four months. Once I feel, I couldn't looming seed because of the weather, obviously.
Right.
We jumped on it because we got some nice weather. It's already, yeah, nicer than it is now.
Is there any other...
No, there is a timeline limit listed, that was what I was concerned about.
What's the motion?
Right here.
It's right here.
Oh, you got it? Okay.
Yep, yeah, right here.
Okay. Motion to accept...
One question. Yep, Craig? Lots ten and eleven, known as sixteen Littlefield and seventeen Littlefield?
That's incorrect. It's actually fourteen and sixteen. This has gone on through the...
Are you talking lots or are you talking house numbers?
House numbers. It's fourteen and sixteen, correct?
Uh, let me just get...
It got messed up with the taxes like two years ago, and I...
Right. That, that's the reason for my question, I was actually out there today, and I noticed that.
How it got messed up when I...
So, so ten and eleven currently, I was out there today.
Yeah.
Ten and eleven, lots ten and eleven are lots...
Fourteen, that's, uh, numbers...
Or street numbers.
14 and 16.
14 and 16.
Yeah.
The two lots at the end of the cul-de-sac.
Exactly.
Next to 17?
You're right.
Those are the two lots.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I was out there today and I didn't see any evidence of looming or seeding or.
Just the apron of the road, 15 feet along the road.
I didn't even see that here from the pictures I've taken.
Yeah, it was done. It was just done last, a week before last.
Okay. So on the full release of covenant document, for accuracy purposes, do we need to modify this or amend this document or whatever the right to?
Amend.
So.
Okay.
So it references lots 10 and 11, but it references also known as 16 Littlefield and 17 Littlefield. So those street, the street addresses should be corrected before we sign it and he has to take it to the registry of deeds.
That's not in my motion.
No, it's not yet, so.
So be careful, because it's act.
Excuse me, I have, in the release of covenant, lot 10 and lot 11, which is accurate.
Right, but my request, but, but they, but the follow-up sentence says in respectively known as 16 and 17 Littlefield Pond Road.
I see that, okay.
So those, I would suggest we either.
Is it 14 and 16?
Remove those street addresses or get the, make sure we have the right addresses.
It's actually 16 and 14.
Okay, so I'm happy to.
It's backwards, yeah. If you change the 17 to a 14, it's.
I'm happy to run in the other room if everybody wants to wait a minute.
Sure.
I think that it was on the other document that was correct.
I noticed it at our last meeting and I pointed it out to Charlene, but that, that was before we saw the actual release. It was just on her write-up.
Yeah.
So that wasn't a legal document, but now.
It was messed up with the assessors way back, I fixed that.
Tell them the date, too.
The date should say April 3, Mr. Chair, to my colleague.
Yes.
The, your concern about the looming and seeding, whether it's been done or not, it's, it's actually still a condition. It's still a proposed condition on the, on the covenant.
Okay.
So it would be covered even if it's, even if it's not sufficient yet.
Okay.
Yeah, the money, the money's, was the looming seed, the bounds, and the as-built total $10,000 and then 150%.
I would just check that, because when I was out there yesterday, I didn't see any evidence of.
It's sleeping. Sees, it's true, the cold weather. It was 20, we had frost just two days ago.
This is an amount of interest, where were your rebuilds made?
Pennsylvania. I've worked with factories from New Hampshire, Canada, Maine, and.
It was made in Canada?
Yeah, yeah, oh, yeah.
I'm thrilled with it.
They go with the freight, the freight costs, but the Amish builder back, and I made a solid deal with a factory in Pennsylvania.
Both in Pennsylvania.
It's in Liverpool, Pennsylvania. It's an interesting cause, it's, it's gaining popularity, really is, because you think about it, plumbers and electricians are working for 70, they're billing out at $70, $80 an hour. And they have to, because they're hauling their tools around in trucks, and the DOT's all over us today. It's, my, my brother's attorney, I'm like, is anyone coming in, make sure your pencils aren't too sharp? You know, we get pulled over all the time. I, you have to buy, you can't have a trailer older than three years old or you're, you're nervous, a light's going to be out or something. So all that's erased because you're building in the factory. They're commuting to work, they're carpooling, they're riding their bikes. All the materials come in. When you build a house, the materials go on a train, off a train, on a truck, to the lumberyard, off the truck, back on a truck, to the job site. And you have dumpsters, when I, we don't, I haven't had one dumpster out there building those houses. We use, there's no waste, so it's.
It's all built when they get to you.
Pretty much, yeah. Until they, homeowners make, some people think they want a modular home and they really didn't.
Like my wife.
So honestly, I wasn't speedy Gonzales out there, we do a lot, I do a lot with, I do a lot in Lexington, Needham, very cerebral clientele that it's all thought out, they know exactly what they want, it's like buying a car. They hand it off to me and we build it, boom, 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 and it's done, 12 weeks.
How long does it take?
Usually it's about eight to 12 weeks post-set, if it's, if there's no changes.
Versus a stick.
When I contract with clients, I say 16, average is 16 weeks.
Versus a stick, build what?
We haven't taken a recess yet.
Pushing a year, eight months, yeah.
We're all in public.
Is it today?
It's for us.
Yeah.
Yeah. All wrapped up, yeah.
Maybe sometimes a year and a half.
See, when you, when you're building modular, everything's happening simultaneously. We give the go-ahead, once the permit is signed, they're building the house, I'm putting the foundation in, the septic, we backfill. We set the house. I do flooring, I'm now taking some tile from the factory, but we usually tile the master bath. All, all the hardwood flooring on-site and the siding.
Right, at least mine was, hardwood came inside the house?
You can, but now everyone wants these wide planks. I do, and I have a good relationship with Stoner products, we're using their, they have a really nice foil floor that is durable for the sandy environment down here.
We didn't want to be there when we had the big crane and that all the parts of the house were around the front yard.
Yeah, yeah.
And the, my wife decides at that point she's going to come to see what's going on. And that's the time that they picked up a piece of the house with the crane, lifted up over the house because it belonged in the back.
Yeah, yeah. Set day's messy, but it's like a barn raising, it's.
Oh, yeah.
Do second stories, that's fun. Tear the roof off and leave all the plants, everything's intact. We do, I usually schedule them for the winter, because you don't have to do any site work, and actually it's better with the ground frozen. We did a, did two last year in Needham, one in Redding. What's that? When did I start doing this?
When did the company start doing a, a second floor?
I, I, I was a high-end builder and I did a lot in Hingham, and I used to move old homes with the, years ago, like a 300-year-old colonial was tight to the road. So through the 80s and 90s, I worked with Sally Weston, an architect, and, and we, we moved, we figured it out. And I worked with Jim Gordon movers, and we'd pick the house up and move it back, add a garage, make it look like a barn. And, and then I got tired of working for the higher end, making McMansions, it just, I got a name for blowing up these historic homes. And it became a fight to, to keep things like historic, because once you do it once, it's gone. So I researched and I said, I'm going to get into, do affordable green homes, and that's, that's where I came up with the modulars.
I think we're, we're ready for the.
I'm ready to roll.
Ready to roll? So I think we'll entertain a motion.
Motion to accept the roadway report of Mr. Ojala and impose a financial surety in the amount of $15,000 cash, being 150% of the estimated value of the incomplete roadway work and further to execute the Town of Howard's Planning Board performance secured by deposit of money for Hybrid Built Homes LLC. Said surety shall not be released until such time as the placement of bounds, the required looming and seeding, and the submittal and acceptance of the as-built plan pursuant to 400-11 point F and further that said completion of performance being not later than one year from this date.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, David?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
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 Motion to release the applicant from the planning board agreement and covenant 34154, Book 23001, Page 40.
Second.
Motion and a second, David?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
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 Okay, would you like to take the time to do that now?
Yes, why don't we sign now?
Let's get it done.
Yep.
So, Bill, I'll start with you. And Greg, I'll start with you on this.
Will this be enough signatures I can take it to the deeds tomorrow or?
I have to get an orderized?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So here's Howard's planning board, so you can just sign. So, um, I don't know, I can email it up to you, come back down?
No, we're trying to put, I got, one of the clients already sold their house and been sort of, calling me all the time.
Does anybody know if health is still there?
No, they're gone.
A different doctor.
You want both of these signed, Bill?
Yes.
No, only, sorry.
Okay, so I can't do it tonight?
No, I'll come back tomorrow, yeah.
I can't authorize my own signature.
I want to stay with the one with multiple pieces. Sorry, Dave, you can't sign.
He's heartbroken, I'm sure.
There's only one of those. Mm-hmm. Thank you.
There's two of those.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, yeah. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is covenant release request PB-2015-12 Chase Arthur's Way. Is this a quick covenant release?
Yeah, so I, you probably have a copy of the diagram in your notes, so. So, he. You don't, okay.
Where, where exactly, it says off Route 139.
Near the water tower.
I assume it's 137.
Near the water tower?
So is it?
The road that's gone in.
Oh, so it should be 39, not 137? This subdivision is located off Route 139.
Oh, yes, yes.
So it should be 39?
Yes, it should be 37.
137.
137.
Oh.
Orleans Road.
Oh, 139.
That's 39.
139.
39.
39. So it's 39.
39 is Harwich, Orleans, Harwich.
It's 39 this way, 137 this way.
Right, 137.
137's with the, with the fire department.
It's probably just a little typo in the report, yeah.
And the new fire department's on 39.
Yes.
39 and 137.
Yep.
So is this 39 or is it 137?
39, Orleans Road.
39, okay.
Orleans Road.
39.
Just trying to be aware.
What, before the water tower, if you're going towards East Harwich?
Uh, I think it's after the wa-water tower.
Alexander's Chase?
No, 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 it's brand new, it's huge.
Oh, on the right.
On the right.
Yeah. Okay. Okay.
They just got through landscaping in front of it?
Yep, yep.
Yeah, so we have previously released two lots, and he's coming back to ask for two more.
We make a motion?
Need a motion?
Yes, sir.
Move to release. Lots four and five on Arthur's Way, AKA The Preserve, located off Route 39.
Two.
And what lots have been released already?
So lots two and three.
Two and three have been released, okay.
I'll, I'll second, so that I can ask a question.
Mm-hmm.
Do we have any? This is only a partial release, right? We're not, we're not.
Right, it's written up for a partial release.
Okay. Oh, good.
A vote on the partial release, David?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Okay.
Sign it now, I guess.
Yeah, so this is March 26th, you could, if you're happy to pen it out, you can, I'll go make new ones while you go on with the minutes or whatever.
Well, ours is, oh, do you have a separate one?
I have the real one.
Oh, you have the real ones, okay, that's my question.
Yeah.
What's wrong with it?
The date, again, because this was postponed hearing.
Oh.
So if you'd like me to go change them or otherwise, we'll pen it out.
We can go through.
We've got other stuff to do, sure.
Next up on the agenda, meeting minutes of February 26th and March 12th.
Move to adopt the meeting minutes of February 26th and March 12th.
Second.
We have a vote and a second, David?
Aye.
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 A question, I was not here for the 12th. Can I still?
You can't vote on it.
So, but I can accept the.
26th.
26th, so I vote aye for 26 and no vote for.
Abstain.
Or abstain, okay.
Show recording.
And I'm aye. Yep. Okay, so those are good.
I didn't see any advisory opinions.
Don't believe there's any.
It is. This is only Board of Appeals, oh, it was for the 27th, so it's old.
Can I look at?
Yeah, it was for the 27th of March, Joe, it was for the last meeting. I didn't have a new one for this one.
Okay.
I don't think there's any one.
You know, I, now we're waiting, I know I beat a drum about this, but I have to tell you that you down to look in the campgrounds. There's another three or four of them being converted into year-round homes.
Any tear downs?
No, no.
Just conversions.
Conversions, ripping off the fronts and adding parts and.
Making it year-round versus cottage.
Exactly, exactly.
So we're good on advisory opinions? Any old business?
I have a new bit of business.
Yes.
Okay, so the town had sent around this brochure, I gave everybody a second one just in case you didn't get it. Dave, I'll make sure you get one. And.
I think we have a meeting on May 14th, planning board meeting.
Is that a Thursday?
No, I believe it's a Tuesday.
Katie's going to check for us.
14th? 14th is a Tuesday.
Well, the old chairman asked me to sign them up, so I have one ready to go. You can spread the word amongst other members, it's, or any board.
Yeah.
Okay, so it's a Tuesday planning board, so it's not really going to suit us.
It's not going to work for us.
Okay, all right, so forget that. Signing up Larry.
As far as, another part of new business, I apologize, Bill, I didn't introduce you at the beginning.
Sorry.
But Bill Stoltz is back on the planning board.
Welcome back.
Welcome.
I think you were on when I came on.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. I think I was on 12 years.
Yeah.
I was with Joe.
And Joe.
We started.
Joe was there, yep.
You're glutton for punishment.
Great to have you back.
Yeah, it's good to have you back.
Nice to have you back.
Any briefs? Any briefings or reports at all?
I can do the briefings while we're, I can do a CPC briefing while you folks are signing. Just again, a reminder that there were eight applications that were approved by CPC. We did have enough money for all of the applications that were before us this year. They are going, they will all be on the town warrant at town meeting. And I encourage everyone to attend town meeting and to support the CPC applications. They are, have a wide range this year. We are, had voted money to support the Housing Institute, which has been very successful, which is put on by Community Development Partnership, which is providing local officials on, throughout the Cape with some much-needed knowledge on developing affordable housing. We voted again to so, to fund the.
Thank you.
Town's new Affordable Housing Trust in the amount of about $315,000, I believe. That is again to help support affordable housing in, in developing affordable housing in the town. We voted to put money towards the Brooks Academy Museum for them to do some much-needed historic preservation work on kind of keeping it water, making it watertight again and doing some outdoor work. We also had applications for lifeguard chairs. We had applications for a new billboard at White House Field. We had applications for a, a new bathroom that's handicap accessible at Sandy Pond. And we also had an application for doing some much-needed revetment work at Red River Beach so that they can build up the back of the jetty that is at the far end of the, down at the end so that the parking lot doesn't continue to collapse in. So there were a total of eight applications, the money is there, the articles are on the town warrant and need their, need support from the public to get approved, so I highly encourage.
So you spent everything you had?